Public hearing, um, due to the weather earlier today, Tim Knight's travel got a little upended. He's on his way back and will hopefully be joining us mid-meeting. Um, in the meantime, I'll run the meeting until he gets here. So this eve- this evening, we're going to start with a public hearing on school choice. After we complete that, we'll move on to our regular business meeting. Um, we're going to model this public hearing on how we hear articles on town meetings. So members of the public will be invited to speak. They should state their name and address and try to keep comments to three minutes. Um, members of the public can speak more than once, but I'd like to try to keep comments to three minutes to allow, um, more of a dialogue. We'll make sure that everyone gets a chance to speak. The school committee will then deliberate. We'll see if there's additional feedback from the public. Um, and then we will close the hearing and move to a vote. Do you guys have any questions? Okay, um, so at this time, I'd like to open the school choice public hearing with a roll call of the members of the school committee. Michelle Kirk be present.
Yeah, Ram present. Will Horn present.
Diana Frashella present.
Okay, I'd like to open public comment on school choice. Members of the public are invited to comment here in person or through Zoom. If you're on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. We ask that you keep your camera on when making Zoom comments and state your name and address, keeping comments to three minutes.
Hold on, could you make me a panelist, please?
Sorry.
It's all right.
Are there any comments on school choice?
Hi.
Is this on? Okay.
Yep. I'm Claire Pickering.
It's only for the TV, it's not for the amplification here, yeah.
Sorry, I'm Claire Pickering, I live at 26 Chaney Pond Road. I just have a brief statement. As a taxpayer, I certainly appreciate the exploration of any and all sources of potential revenue for our town and schools. As a parent of two kids in the Medfield school system, I do not see the advantage to participating in the school choice program for our kids. Even if we could squeeze a few students into classes with lower enrollment, that would alter our student to teacher ratio in a way that is not necessarily beneficial to our own current students. Additionally, students accepted into the program would rightly have access to not just courses, but all programs, supports, and activities. Music, sports, counseling, IEPs, and 504s. All areas where we pay a premium for excellence and individualized attention for our students. And finally, the numbers just don't add up. As I understand it, under the school choice program, Medfield will receive a payment of $5,000 per student that comes into our district through school choice. Currently, we are spending $18,769 per pupil in Medfield. While this is probably an excellent option for kids in districts with different priorities or budgets, it would negatively impact our own kids and most likely cost us money. I hope the school committee will vote again to opt out of the school choice program. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone on Zoom?
I don't know.
I'm not panelists.
I'm not, I'm not here, no.
Chris Potts, 7th Curve Street. Um, I know every year I come and mention this about school choice. I'm neither for or against school choice. I feel that, um, you know, there's been an excellent analysis done, for example, for the kindergarten program in terms of looking at phasing out the tuition for that. There's been wonderful presentations, there's been wonderful, wonderful financial analysis. It seems very odd to me that you would open up a hearing and just ask people for opinions about something that has many different facets to it. And yet, we have never not, we have not once seen a financial presentation on the pros and cons of school choice. Uh, there's a lot of misunderstanding about what it is and what it isn't. We are down at the high school level by at least 100 students this year, if not more. Um, there's a, there's, there are trade-offs with the revenue, for sure. But we deserve, as a community, to be able to see the pros and cons and not just expect someone to come to a public hearing and just weigh in on something when they haven't really seen the financials, as other districts have done. I mean, the native superintendent was actually, went against the school committee. You know, they wanted, the school committee was against it. The native superintendent made the case for it, for all the reasons that I brought up in previous years. They ultimately did not vote to do school choice, but at least they had a very good discussion about it. So I think that as a community, we deserve to have the numbers. We deserve to see the pros and cons, and that is, in all these years, it's never happened. And I think that's a disservice to the community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone online?
No hands.
Do you want me to share, read this into the record?
Sure.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to share, um, the school choice recommendation memo that I sent the school committee on May 13th. Um, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12B, all school districts in Massachusetts are presumed to participate in and admit non-residential students through the school choice program. School choice created an option for a family to enroll their child in a school district outside of where that child lives. Essentially, if the Medfield Public Schools participated in the school choice, a student could live anywhere in Massachusetts and attend school in Medfield. Medfield has never participated in the school choice for the 30 years of its been law. If you look at other like districts, uh, you will see the same patterns of voting no for school choice. For example, Hoppington, Dover Sherbrooke, Wayland, Weston, Wellesley, Needham, Concord, and, and Westwood do not admit students to the school choice program. Although there's an opportunity to gain revenue of $5,000 per student, Medfield currently spends $18,769.8 cents per student, um, and adds students outside the district to our enrollment, there are several concerns to consider when determining to participate in the school choice program, and they are as follows. Number one, increased class size over and above Medfield enrollment. Students, teachers, and parents enjoy lower class sizes at the secondary level. Additional non-Medfield students would increase the student teacher ratio in both core classes and electives. Two, reduction of opportunities for Medfield students. In addition to increasing class size and potentially limiting access to classes or electives, non-Medfield students would take away opportunities in our athletic, music, and theater programs. Three, Medfield taxpayers subsidizing the education of non-Medfield students. Medfield currently spends over $18,000 per student to educate Medfield students. School choice would require Medfield residents to subsidize the other $13,000 per student. Lack, lack of control when, when demand outweighs the slots. The lottery system would need to be put in place for the demand for non-Medfield students is lar- is larger than the seats that are open at a particular grade level. Next, removing funding from other school districts. When Medfields, when school districts lose funds, staff and programs get terminated. If Medfield were to participate, we would be siphoning funds earmarked for students in another town. Commitment to siblings of enrolled students, school, school choice students, excuse me. Medfield would have a responsibility to non-Medfield students' siblings should slots become available in a particular grade level. This is an additional responsibility and/or expense for students not living in Medfield. Implications for real estate. Parents always say they moved to Medfield for the schools. Why would you pay Medfield prices if you could live somewhere else and still send your children to Medfield? A local real estate agent has told me there could be negative consequences and negative impact with school choice. These concerns and challenges highlight the impact that participating in the school choice program could have on our district. Based on these reasons, I continue to recommend the Medfield Public Schools does not participate in the school choice program FY '25. And then I ended, would please reach out to me if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. Um, does anyone have anything they want to, have questions or things they want to talk about in regards to school choice?
No.
No? Anyone else from the public? Okay, um, we're going to close the hearing first, and then we'll move to a vote. Okay, so at this time, um, if we're ready to vote? Yes, okay, then, um, do I hear a motion to close the school choice public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Do I hear a motion, so now open up to vote on school choice? Do I hear a motion that Medfield will not participate in the school choice program?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody.
Can you do a roll call vote on the second one?
Sure, sorry. Um, we'll do, do I hear a motion that Medfield will not participate in the school choice program?
Leo Brim, aye.
Michelle Kirk be aye.
Will Horn, aye.
Diana Frashella, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, um, now that we've closed the hearing, I'd like to open up the regular meeting with a roll call vote. Michelle Kirk be present.
Leo Brim, present.
Will Horn, present.
Diana Frashella, present.
Okay, um, before opening up public comment, I would just like to state that the appeal of the superintendent's decision on I am Billie Jean King has been withdrawn. As a result, this topic is not on our agenda this evening. The book will also remain in circulation at the Memorial School Library. Um, at this time, I'd like to open up public input. Members of the public are also welcome to comment during the public input, either here or through Zoom. Please raise your Zoom hand. We ask that you keep your camera on when making a Zoom comment and that you follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes and only on topics under the purview of the school committee. And whether you're here in person or on Zoom, please state your name and address for the record. Is there any public comment? Anyone on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom.
Okay. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. We have approval of the meeting minutes from our April 3rd meeting, as well as some awards and donations. Jeff, I'm going to turn that over to you.
Would you like me to read all of that?
Sure.
Okay, sure, we can do that. So this time of year, we typically have all the approvals for, um, the graduating seniors and their student awards and scholarships, so that's a bulk of what we're going to have for this particular one. Uh, one, David E. Maderas Theater Society Memorial Award for $1,500. Four, Medfield High School Theater Society Awards at $250 each, for a total of $1,000. One Student Council Award for $250. Three Unsun Leader Awards at $250 each, for a total of $750. 14 National Honor Society Awards at $250 each, for a total of $3,500. Four National Honor Society Awards at $350 each, for a total of $1,400. Three National Honor, uh, Four Pillar Essay Scholarships at $1,000 each, for a total of $3,000. One Hunter Williams Scholarship Award for $1,000. That's the first time we're having Hunter's, uh, scholarship award. Uh, two lasting legacy yearbook awards at $500 each, for a total of $1,000. Two yearbook staff initiative awards for $500 each, for a total of $1,000. And then in terms of donations, $500 from the Norfolk District Attorney's Office for graduation night and prom. $1,000 from the Schofel, Schofel family to be deposited in the MHS gift account. $1,440 from the Blake PTO for the Blake Student Activity. And $4,550.79 to the Dale Street PTO to deposit in the Dale Street Student Activity Account. I ask to approve as shared.
Anyone have any questions on the minutes, awards, or donations? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next up, we have, I'd like to welcome Chris Heran from Horn Communications. He's going to speak to us this evening about, um, district communication. Do you want to add anything?
Sure, I know Chris is not a stranger to some of you that have gone to the MASC workshops. Chris does a lot of great workshops on, um, strategic communication for both school committees and superintendents. Um, and we partnered with Chris before, and this year, we partnered with Chris to do an assessment on the communication from the district and schools and asked him to do an assessment and give us some feedback on what direction we should be moving in that regard. So I just want to welcome Chris and thank you for coming out and meeting with us tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for having me, excuse me, and thank you for the opportunity to conduct this assessment. Um, I want to begin tonight just by commending you for district leaders for requesting this assessment. I think anytime you invite a third party in to take a look at any function of the organization and really invite the opportunity to identify what's working and where there are areas for improvement, um, it requires some courage, and I, I think it's always worthwhile. Um, and I was really appreciated the conversations that I had as part of this process. I learned a lot, um, and I was just very impressed by everyone's willingness to really dig deep and to think about both of those categories, about what is working well in terms of communications and where could the district and schools improve in that area. And I'm going to share a little bit with that, about that with you tonight. You have the report, it is rather lengthy, I'm not going to go through every slide and, and go through every word. Um, I'm going to make it just a brief presentation, but I really would love to hear from you and answer any questions you have or any areas where you would like to dive a little bit deeper. Um, first, just to sort of remind you about the process that I engage in with these assessments. The first part is really just me taking a look at a lot of different artifacts, both print and digital, excuse me, so your websites, your social media accounts, emails to families, superintendent messages, media coverage, your strategic plan, survey data, the state of the school's mailer, and other things that Dr. Marsden provided to me that are really helpful just in terms of getting a sense of what exists right now for your communications tools and resources. And then the really fun part, as I said, is the small group interviews. And I ended up conducting a series of interviews with different groups of stakeholders, including some school committee members, parents, staff, teachers, administrators, central office leaders, um, and so on, and really great conversations that, as I said, were very sort of free flowing in a way, and people were really candid about, um, what works for them and what they'd like to see. Um, and that really sort of makes up the bulk of a lot of what I found. But I also recognize, of course, that those are relatively small samples. You are, you know, talking to 28 people is a drop in the bucket to all the folks who are in your district who work and attend school here. Uh, but it certainly gives us a little glimpse into some perspectives on the work. Uh, just a little bit of context, uh, for this work. You know, I, I've done these kind of assessments in lots of districts, large and small, urban, suburban, rural, uh, lots of different types of districts. And I always sort of say that it's not a one-size-fits-all type of approach. Uh, there's not something that I believe works in every district, so a lot of it's about sort of getting a sense of your community and what works well here for your culture and your schools and your community, um, and trying to tailor my recommendations to, to what I hear from folks who live and work here. Because every community is different. So, as I said, you have in the report sort of a summary of findings. I won't, uh, go through all these in the interest of time, but the first few slides are just sort of, you know, 10 or 12 of, I think, sort of the, some of my biggest takeaways from, from what I learned and what I'm sharing back with you. Um, I provide findings and recommendations in a number of areas. The first three being email, communication, website, and social media. Sort of, that's sort of, you know, sort of more the nitty gritty, sort of taking a look at those three channels and the ways that schools and the district are using them now. And then the others are sort of more, sort of broader questions that I posed to, to all my interviewees about the state of district-wide communication, two-way communication, recognizing that communication is not just what we as a district put out, but also how we hear back from families and staff and students, um, about their questions, concerns, ideas, and so on. Um, external communication, I know this has been a topic of interest for the school committee as well, about how are we sharing information with residents and taxpayers who maybe don't have kids in the schools and are not employees? How are we reaching them? What do they know about our schools? And how do we keep them informed and, and excited about what's going on here? And then just sort of a hodgepodge of additional topics. So just one other sort of observation that I alluded, alluded to just now is that I think the findings and recommendations in my mind sort of fall into two broad categories. One are sort of the tactical, the things that are sort of, uh, you know, like some, some tweaks to your website or some ways of using email differently or some social media strategy. Uh, some of those are sort of low-hanging fruit, and I've shared some of those with Dr. Marsden and the team already that may be implemented quickly. The other set of findings and recommendations, I think, are sort of more complex and they sort of require, I think, some more long-term thinking. Um, they are not as sort of tactical, but rather sort of what I would consider strategic, strategic, um, and may require sort of cultural shifts, um, in order to change the way that we communicate. So the report that you received kind of contains a, a mix of both of those. I'll, I'll give you a couple of examples. One that really stuck out for me and that came up in all of the conversations is just this challenge of technology platforms. Every district that I work with is struggling with this in one way or another. There are just so many platforms out there and different teachers and schools and central offices rely on different tools to communicate with families or in some cases to complete sort of transactions. Um, this can be overwhelming for everyone involved, for the folks who are doing the communicating and the folks receiving the messages. Uh, so I heard from staff and parents and administrators alike about how this array of platforms, and this is by no means a complete list, can be overwhelming at times. So one of the findings has to do with just sort of thinking about where it's possible perhaps to streamline some of this, particularly with respect to communication and communication with families, um, and recognizing that the more sort of consistency there is across schools, across grade levels, and across the district, uh, the easier it is for, for parents not to have to have logins and passwords for dozens of different platforms, but to streamline that wherever possible. So that's sort of an example of a, a very tactical, although I realize also complex, finding and recommendation. Another one that sort of emerged for me as sort of an important takeaway is this question of sort of district-wide communication. Understandably, Dr. Marsden has told me that he and his team rely on schools for the bulk of communication with families, and that makes perfect sense. Uh, families hear from their principals, their child's teacher, and those are the day-to-day conversations and the emails that they receive from those folks are where they get most of their information. However, I shared with the superintendent and others, the opportunities presented by, also having some district-level communication, um, not just about things like, you know, what you went through with COVID and other emergency situations, um, but also just some of the work that's going on pre-K to 12 and creating a sense of coherence across those grades and levels, um, and giving people a sense of the big picture, if you will. Um, and you'll see several references in the report to your strategic plan, uh, which creates a great platform, I think, for some of that communication, to be able to really share with folks both in and out of the district about what is that big picture? What are we working toward? What are our goals? What are our priorities as a district? How are we working together to achieve them? What is our progress in those areas? Um, so that people can have a sense of the sum being, the whole being greater than the sum of its parts. So several recommendations in there are related to that. And I think that, again, ties back to the broader community, because that is a chance to talk to, I think, taxpayers and residents and voters about sort of the big picture and to really understand what Medfield Public Schools is working on and what sort of the big, the, the priorities are pre-K to 12. Um, I'm going to jump ahead here, um, because I want to share with you one other slide about some of the initial action steps and improvements that are already underway because of the feedback that I provided along the way and shared with the team several weeks ago. So, uh, in early April, I met with the administrative team to share the initial findings and recommendations and to discuss the report. Um, and they were just outstanding. I mean, I think they just really were excited about, uh, what folks had shared with me and sort of went right off to the races, brainstorming and thinking about action steps that they could take either in their school or as a team to sort of make some improvements in areas where I think there, there are some opportunities for growth. Uh, I've certainly had a number of conversations with Dr. Marsden, um, helping him think through sort of some of these pieces, especially the sort of central office piece. Um, I think some of that resonated with him and his team. As you probably saw, they have already come out with a new, uh, publication called Central Office Insights, a monthly newsletter, there's an excerpt here, to do exactly what I was just describing of getting parents a sense of not only what's going on in their school or schools, but what is the big picture and hearing from, from superintendent and his team about operational things, as well as teaching and learning topics and other sort of big picture matters, uh, that, that apply district-wide. Um, other action steps that have occurred, um, already, um, some preliminary website enhancements. In addition to this report, I shared with Dr. Marsden just what I consider some low-hanging fruit on the websites, some easy improvements, um, for the for, again, the district and school sites. Some of those are already underway, and he's told me that some enhancements will be scheduled to take place this summer as well. And again, because so many of my conversations, especially with parents and teachers, were so robust and gave me such so many insights into sort of the culture here, I shared some of those sort of broad-level themes from those conversations with Dr. Marsden and encouraged him to have similar conversations, not with those exact groups necessarily, but with his teacher and parent advisory groups, to really open the floor to them about these questions, perhaps using the report as a springboard, so that he can hear directly from folks about some of what I heard as well. Back to the question about sort of the platforms and the technology, I think that also resonated with the team, and they indicated that they're really going to be thinking about using next school year as a planning year for the possibly a parent notification system that would be used pre-K to 12, that would incorporate a lot of different elements and give parents sort of easier access to messages. And there are so many platforms out there, there are some good choices available, but really being thoughtful, recognizing that that's also an investment and requires some time to really give some thought to. So that's how next year is going to be used. So we have left things in that tonight was an important step because, as I said, we want to hear from you, get your reactions, what resonates, what questions you have. There are some sort of hours remaining in this contract that I have with you all to sort of think about next steps and to work with Dr. Marsden and the team to be able to do some other work this school year and to set you up for success in the work moving forward. So I'll thank you again and open it up to you for questions and comments, or however the chair would like to proceed.
Do you guys have questions?
Sure. I guess, of working in a school district and this being part of my role is to analyze communications, what's happening, I was curious on to kind of the, you know, how are we going to analyze the success, you know, of these initiatives? Like the new newsletter that Dr. Marsden and his team will have to prepare every week now to maintain that, right, as a formality? Are we going to be tracking open rates and the click-throughs to other information that might be in there so that we can measure the impact of those? And maybe, you know, focus our efforts on to, instead of all those platforms, obviously those were not all of our platforms, but, you know, the ones we do have, you know, between Twitter and Instagram and the emails that come home and the smores and the, you know, everything else that's out there today. You know, I think having a source of truth would be important for any learning community, and ours as well, and to think of all of the principals and the administrators' time that is spent for an effective communication, you know, path. I guess I'm curious as to what the plan holds for that kind of measurement or metrics.
Yeah, it's a great question. I think, you know, one of the advantages of technology is it does give us the ability to measure things that we couldn't once measure. So certainly for, as you said, you know, email metrics, open and click rates, social media has, you know, robust metrics that are available to us, not just in terms of the engagement with each post, but, you know, the growth of your followers and so on. Certainly website traffic, all of those things can be measured and tracked over time, and you can certainly set goals for yourself as a district. I think there are other ways to sort of get a sense of whether or not you're getting traction with some of this work that are perhaps harder to measure. You know, one of the topics that came up in some of the conversations was just the decline in parent involvement, at least at the school level. While parents may still be very involved at home with homework and all the really important stuff that administrators in particular noted, fewer parents coming to things at schools, and sort of just less involvement in sort of the parent volunteer work. So, you know, perhaps there's a way to sort of measure that and/or at least be mindful of that progress over time that I would hope would be a positive outcome of communication. You know, there are other things like that, I think, in terms of just, perhaps even anecdotally, of getting a sense about, are we chipping away at some of what we read about in this report that it is not going as well? Are there more parents saying that they aren't struggling with the platforms and they're feeling more informed? It's always tricky too, because I think, you know, this is sort of an aside, but as every conversation revealed, some parents want a lot of information and some parents want very little. So therefore, some are saying, we're getting too much, and others are saying, getting too little. So striking that balance is always tricky, and therefore, I think, measuring some of those things can be tricky too. But your point is very well taken, and I'd be very happy to brainstorm some metrics to move forward.
In your professional expertise, because this is something that you do, right? Was there anything, any trends that you saw that were Medfield-specific or surprising to you that kept rising to the top?
Nothing that I would say is Medfield-specific. I mean, I think there are certain things that are more prevalent in some districts than others, including those that I pointed out earlier. I mean, I think that my point about sort of the K-12 struck me here more than it does in other places. That I, it's not unusual for central offices to sort of leave a lot of the autonomy for communication to schools. But I think if I had to sort of put that on a spectrum somewhere, I would say Medfield is probably at one end of that spectrum and moving in what I would consider the right direction and in trying to be more of a presence in communication district-wide.
And then you mentioned in your presentation, we should consider launching a Get Involved campaign. So prior to COVID, I think we had a healthy amount of volunteers, and we do not now. And again, my understanding is that that's not a Medfield problem.
Right.
But I guess I'm just a little curious about, like, who has launched a Get Involved campaign that's worked well? Like, where could we take some notes to model after to try to help people get back into the schools?
It's a good question. I'll have to go and do some, a little bit of research, I mean, I've seen some here and there, but, you know, I think there might be different pieces that you could take from that. I think, you know, one thing that struck me in having those conversations is just sort of demystifying volunteerism for some parents and trying to get a sense about what is keeping them from volunteering. Is it simply time and busy schedules? Or is there a sense of like, oh, I don't have anything to offer? Or I don't want to be the president of my PTO? Whatever those obstacles may be, trying to get a handle on that first, and then sort of designing a campaign that chips away at some of those misunderstandings or reinforces that there are lots of different ways to get involved at the classroom level, at the school level. So it's a great question, Michelle, and I can certainly do some legwork to see if there might be some models out there because lots of other districts are, I shouldn't say lots, other districts are certainly wrestling with the same question.
Yeah. Okay. And then when we're talking about different type of platforms, what are some of the, like, prevalent ones right now that, again, are effective? And you've seen good, good usage of it? If we're switching to something that's more unified across everywhere, like, who does it, who does that well? What does that look like? What are the names of some of those things?
Yeah, I've shared some with Dr. Marsden. I mean, I tend to be a little bit careful and try to be somewhat agnostic about these platforms because I don't want it to seem like I'm endorsing anything or working for anyone, because I don't. I just work for myself and don't have a horse on that race for which platform you adopt. That said, I have shared with Dr. Marsden some of what I've learned from other districts where I work who have made a change and are really happy with that change, or in some cases are not as happy with the change, and using that data. I will share with you instead, I think, some of what I think folks are looking for, a sort of one-stop shopping for communication. So there are platforms out there, for example, where a parent can just log in to that one place, and if a parent missed an email from the principal of one school and saw the one from a principal of another school, they're all going to be right there. And perhaps they missed one from the superintendent. So if they decide, if some emails come out on a Friday, some on a Monday, they can log in on a Wednesday and just get caught up on everything that they've missed if they've got kids in multiple schools as well as a district one, without having necessarily say, oh, that one was on Smore, I think it came through text, but that one came through email. I think platforms have different levels of sophistication in terms of translation services for families whose first language is not English. I've read about other, and heard about other sort of advantages that make districts say, ah, that's something that our current system or systems does not do. My understanding, and I'll certainly defer to Dr. Marsden on this, is that the team's already started looking at some of the options available and has been, I think, somewhat pleased with what you've found in terms of having some options out there.
Yeah, there's some really great options out there. The one concern I think that we had was the newer platforms do everything. So now we have Blackboard Connect for notification. We use all these other ones for instant communication with parents. This does everything. So my question always is, if we put all our eggs in that basket and something goes wrong with that, we're not going to be able to communicate at all. You know, and they've, the folks we've talked to have been pretty, you know, clear about the fact that they can handle that. And in talking to colleagues that have made, this is like the last probably three or four years, folks are starting to make transitions into all these other different platforms into one that does everything. We're looking at the cost analysis of it. It looks like it would be either neutral or even could save some money because we have so many different software pieces now. We put it all in one. So we're looking at a couple of those, and certainly will be bringing it to the committee if we have a decision going forward. And I know that Leo, you do this work all the time, so.
Yeah.
I've implemented two of these in the last 12 months.
Ask for your feedback on that.
Yeah. And I think one of the key things is, and to your point exactly, Dr. Marsden, is, you know, the webpage, and if you, if we've turned on Google Analytics on our webpage, you'll see that everyone goes to the staff, lunch menus, and bus routes primarily the most. And that's pretty much the truth in all of the districts I've worked with in my consulting. You know, but the key factor is some of those, some of those could stay in place because we've already established something, I think, of identifying what we're trying to fix, right? And not trying to fix something we already got working. And, you know, if it's that homeschool connection piece, you know, finding a tool that does what you say, right? It picks up the, you know, the message from every teacher your student. If you have four students in the district, you're going to one spot, and you're going to see all the messages from all four students, from all their teachers, and then you're going to see the principals from all the buildings and all in one spot. And you're going to be able to message them directly back and forth.
Right.
Not have a, you know, the flush of email.
And it's archived, which is great too. I mean, I think one of the things that Chris heard, and I've certainly heard the last few years too, is from parents, is that if I have a student in three different schools, one teacher might be using Smore, one teacher might be using a different method, and then, you know, to Chris's point, was that a text? Was that, what was that? You know, you forget what you're working with. Or if you want to check something out, you want to find information, you have to go through a few hoops before you get there. Instead of if there's one platform that everyone uses, and parents and teachers and principals and everyone uses it, then it's all, everyone knows where to go.
One of the things that came up in some of them was a real strong connection with our Google Classroom installation. So that, you know, the idea of getting parents to be involved in the learning process at home to ease that process for teachers, they could quickly fire off a message and check a box and pull the latest, you know, assignment or, you know, or content from Google Classroom and send it up to parents, so they can scaffold and work with students at home on, you know, whatever, whatever the lesson might be.
Do you guys have anything? Thank you so much, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
It's really great. I'm excited to see what we're able to do with this and how it kind of matches against our strategic plan and the objectives we got from last spring, so.
Great, thanks so much, good luck.
Thanks, Chris, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, next. I'd like to welcome our, some of our seniors, or if someone's speaking for them?
Gwen?
Yeah?
So we've got a presentation to, I don't know if someone, I'm in the Zoom. If someone wants to make me so I can share my screen, or what the best way is to do it? Sure. So I'm Gwen Sawtell, English teacher at the high school and co-advisor of the senior project program.
Hello, I'm Colleen Seber, English teacher at the high school and co-advisor of Senior Project.
So we had talked about this earlier in the year, and I know that we asked, you folks wanted me to make sure that we had some examples of students come in to show what their senior projects are. So really want to thank our students for coming in tonight, and thank Colleen and Gwen for doing the presentation and showing us what's been happening. A lot of activity.
So hopefully everybody can see the screen here, at least in the Zoom at home. I'm not sure I know how to do that.
Went to the rescue.
Is it in my Bluetooth? Is that what I need to do?
All right, so super quick overview of what a year in Senior Project looks like on RN, and then we've got some awesome student samples. So in the fall, we go into senior English classes to speak to all seniors about the possibility of doing a senior project. We like to get in early to have students first start to think about what they may want to explore in their senior projects, if they want to collaborate with their peers, working through the logistics of that, and reaching out to the community for outside mentors in a related field with their senior project. So we like to get in early. By February 1st, we have applications due. The application process involves personal statements, calendars, accounting for how students will spend their time, contact information for both inside mentors, which is a teacher or adult in the building at Medfield High School that our students will work with and check in with about their blog and their project, and outside mentors, which are members of the community in related fields. And then after we collect the applications and students go through an interview process, first day of quarter one, they are off on their senior projects, making it all happen. It's about six weeks long, and the final week we devote to having students come into other classes here at the high school to present, and they write a reflective essay about their experience in Senior Project. Okay, and I'll just add a couple of quick things. It's fourth quarter, just to be clear, so it starts in April. And the projects themselves are really student-designed, so we pretty much say to them, if you can imagine something that you're passionate about, you want to turn it into a project, you can do it with some structure and guidance and mentors. And we have a wild variety, an amazing variety of projects that kids do. They can be really project-based, like I built something, or you're going to hear one of those, that's pretty cool. Or they can be very experience-based. Molly also did a senior project, by the way, as a, we had a lot of kids that year, this year, that were working in Medfield school systems, which is just kind of a lovely way, I think, for kids to end the year. They're in there, many of them work with their former elementary school teachers as like teacher aides and student teachers, and they come back and are just so excited about being able to give back. And so that, that piece is awesome. During the project, I think Colleen already mentioned, they have an inside mentor, which is a faculty member typically at the high school, an outside member who's an expert in the field. And then every week, they're blogging, they blog three times a week and just sort of share with the community what they're up to, and then they make these final presentations. We had 100 students participate this year, which is quite a number, probably our biggest yet. And 71 projects, many kids work independently, but some kids work in small groups. And so we tried to bring for you today sort of a variety of projects the kids have participated in. So our first one is Ben Carpenter.
Oh man, we saw the sun here, we were waiting to see it. So for my project, I decided to build a guitar. It's been kind of something I've really wanted to get into for a long time. I hope to be kind of in that field when I'm older, after college and stuff. So, yeah, I worked with my boss at Upfront Guitars, who, he's been teaching me kind of luthiership, like how to fix guitars and stuff like that. And I worked with him and somebody else I met through work. His name's Eric, sorry. Eric Wilhelm, he owns Starbright Guitars, and he's been building guitars for a long time. So, yeah, he helped me through the process of putting this together. And, I mean, it's come out way better than I could have imagined.
I will say that if you don't know anything about Upfront Guitars, it's officially available here, right? And I actually, just having looked at Ben's blog, went to the shop because I needed a gift for a friend whose daughter's learning to play guitar. And I walked in and said, oh, I'm a teacher in Medfield, and Ben Carpenter is a student, right? He's working with you, Senior Project. And they could not stop talking about what an amazing kid he is and like how just his passion for it has inspired their passion for it. So that was an awesome experience all around. Our next one, Michaela.
Hi, I'm Michaela. For my senior project, I was one of the two spring interns at the Medfield Animal Shelter, which was a really cool experience. So right when I found out about senior project. So right when I found out about Senior Project, I reached out to the shelter because I knew it was what I wanted to do. My sister did a senior project last year, so I kind of already had an idea of what it entailed. Since a kid, I've always like been very passionate about animals, and I've always wanted to volunteer at the shelter, but I've always been too young, so this kind of just felt like the perfect opportunity to do what I've always wanted to do as a kid. And I also did a fundraiser during my project. My goal was to raise like $600. I wanted to create these donation baskets, three of them, one for like the smaller animals, one for cats, and one for dogs. And I ended up posting it to Concerned Citizens, and I ended up raising like over $900, which was really great. I had support from like classmates and past teachers, it was really cool to see. And I ended up giving all the leftover money that I didn't use on the baskets, just all to the shelter. It was a really cool experience. When I did go into the shelter, I did pretty much everything in there that like a volunteer would do, so I walked the dogs and I cleaned and I fed all the pets. It was, it's crazy, you really meet a lot of different types of personalities of animals, so making those breakthroughs with the more like troubled or like quiet ones, it was very rewarding for me. And also just meeting the other volunteers, they were great and they really helped adjust the other, so they have two spring interns and the other girl was from Dover, so I ended up becoming pretty good friends with her throughout the process, which is something that I didn't expect was going to happen, but I'm really happy it did, it was a really great experience.
We are actually looking for a kitten in my family right now, so we're like hoping Michaela maybe is going to be an in, we'll see. And our last one, Sasha's is like, he's going to need to explain it to you, he's fully capable, trust me, but he's going to explain it all.
Hello everyone. For my senior project, I wanted to work in the intersection between music and computer science. That's what I want to study in college, and I will be majoring in engineering and music. And I wanted to create a piece of music where I essentially go back in time, back into the 70s and 80s and recreate how digital music started to be created at that time using the signal processing and audio synthesis techniques of that time. And I wanted to create a piece of music where every, every layer of it, every individual part was created entirely by me. So I started out by writing everything out in a notation software as MIDI, and then I wrote, you can see a little piece of the program here that I wrote that reads the MIDI file and outputs it as music. And then as the project went on, I would add more and more instruments into the file, and so in the end, it ended up outputting like a fully detailed, fully realized song. And there's some, some nice graphs here of some techniques that I used. That's an example of enveloping, which is when you take a waveform and then you add it, you add another sine wave around it, which makes it, gives it a growth and a decay, which is how a wind instrument sounds, because it has the, when you play a wind instrument, it's a growth and a decay, and I used this for one of the sounds in the song. And I was inspired heavily by jazz fusion music. You can see there's a picture of the jazz fusion duo, the Breck Brothers, who are one of the big musicians of the 70s and 80s. And I learned a lot about various signal processing techniques that I can use in the future and will be using in the future in college, such as Fourier transforms, the Karp Strong algorithm, which is mimic, which creates very, very realistic sounding string sounds, is an example of physical modeling synthesis, which is when you use a mathematical model to mimic a physical instrument. And the song is on SoundCloud now, so you should all listen to it.
How can we find it if we go to?
Yeah, exactly, is it? I don't know.
Oh, it's, it's in my presentation, I can send it to you. Like, I, I put it on YouTube, then YouTube removed it for some reason. Which is unfortunate, but it's out there now.
What was the reasoning for removing it?
Yeah, because I clicked on the link and it didn't work.
Yeah, they said that they, I, I checked today, they said that they couldn't process it properly for some reason, I think it was just a bug. I don't think there's anything wrong with the, with the music, I hope, but, yeah.
So Sasha's a little shy, but he's going to MIT to study, what exactly?
Engineering.
Engineering and music, so.
And what are the plans of, of both of you as well after you graduate for next year?
Oh, I'm going to University of Southern Maine.
I'm going to Birmingham State.
Nice, congratulations.
Congratulations to all of you, yeah.
So I think that's it, I don't know if anybody has questions for any of the kids or.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, guys.
They said at the previous meeting, it's a great way to end your senior year. You know, you find a passion, something you want to work on, and they, they just did a wonderful job, so really happy for our kids. Thanks to Gwen and Colleen for doing that.
Yeah, thank you very much for organizing that.
Yeah, thank you.
How long have the, how long has the Senior Projects been going on for?
Four years?
Um, we've seen the project have existed for a long time.
Yeah.
So they, they, they were on for a long time.
It's, it's really grown, yeah.
But in the last five or six years, it's grown quite a bit.
Great.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
All right, next up, I think we have the school committee meeting dates for next year.
So each year we put those together, and you know, we can always add or subtract depending on what, how the year goes, but those are similar to what we've had this year. Andrea put those together around some of the things, we made sure we didn't do the MASC, yeah, MASC, MSS, which we've done every year for the last three years, so we worked around that, but I think it's, you know, ask you to approve those, and if we need to add or delete, we can certainly do that as we've done years past, just to give us a framework to work from.
Anyone have any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the school committee meeting dates for 24, 25 school year?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Top to top, the last.
Yeah.
All right, so the next up is the full-day kindergarten tuition additional scenarios. I'm sorry, are there any other, any other items that's posted?
There are none, I'm sure.
Okay, sorry, now we'll go on to the next one. Full-day kindergarten tuition additional scenarios.
So when we talked about this at the last meeting, you had asked us to put together some different scenarios based on enrollment in the next couple of years, and I think Leo kind of asked us for the pull the Band-Aid off scenario, what would that look like? So Michael worked on that and added that to his presentation, so some pretty good information here, so Michael, please.
Sure. Excuse me, so I'm going to just review scenario one, which is the original scenario that we brought to you a few school committee meetings ago. So scenario one was where, excuse me, we're going to phase out the tuition for students, kindergarten students, and it was going to be a four-year phase, phasing it out, where, you know, this fiscal year was fiscal year '24, we were charging $3,500 a student. Next year, we're charging $2,750 a student, and we proposed fiscal year '26 going down to $1,500 a student, and then fiscal year '27, I know, not charging for tuition, and all those students being tuition-free. And then at the last school committee, it was brought, you know, that they want, we wanted to see a second scenario, you know, how would it look like if we, you know, had a fee for the 228 students coming in, which was going to be our biggest class, and there was, you know, also, it was brought up that we might have to add a couple of teachers, you know, because of the number of students coming in, in that fiscal year. So this was just again scenario one, how we would phase it out, dollar-wise with the revenue coming in and expenses going out. And then this next, again, this was just the, to which, excuse me, the salaries, what the cost of the salaries were, so this year's cost of the salaries were almost $467,000 projecting for next year, at 400 in, close to $489,000, and then bringing down our FTEs from the revolving account and bringing them over into the operational, and we still would have, you know, about $300,000 in salaries that we could pay for out of the revolving account. So scenario two, we looked at, you know, just different models of scenario two and felt that this was what we felt was, you know, the best model, looking at our, you know, revenues coming in, our expenses, our future expenses, and when we do that transition between operational revolving account. So as you can see, fiscal year '24 and '25 remain the same. Fiscal year '26, the scenario one has had it that tuitions, we would charge $1,500 for fiscal year '26, but after doing the math, we would stay at $2,750 for two years for tuitions at 158 students projected, which would be a revenue stream of $434,000. And then in fiscal year '27, reducing that tuition to $1,500, I have 200 students in there, and we know we're, we're projected for 228, but the last bubble, which was my son's class, which is now in the eighth grade, they were supposed to have 228 students, and that number came in closer to 205, 206, because his parents kept their, their students back. So we, you know, we just took an educated guess, we left it at 200 students, not knowing what that number was going to be, so we're projecting revenue at about $300,000 for that. And then in fiscal year '28, which would be the year after that bubble, to reduce the tuition to zero. And then if you look at our spreadsheet here, you can see that our receipts would be going down, but it, it looks at, you know, what our payroll will look like and how we are projecting our payroll. So by the end of 2029, I think there's a balance of $3,800 in there that, you know, the school committee, once you dissolve actually revolving account, the law states that you have to keep the revolving account open for three years, and after the third year, then you can officially vote to resolve, dissolve that account. But after you make a decision that you're not taking a fee, and you have to keep it for three years and then dissolve it at that point.
And Michael, we had talked about scenario two, that was the one that was most helpful if we had to add teachers that year.
Correct, so I'm going to go into that. So for the payroll, you know, we looked at, you know, for '24, there would be four FTEs for teachers and six for, for teaching assistants, and '25, keeping it the same, four and six. And then in fiscal year '26, which would be our third year, we would be moving one FTE, one teacher FTE into the operational, so it would be less of a burden, and, you know, and start that transition from the revolving account into the operational account. And then in fiscal year '27, we have two teachers into the revolving account and still six FTEs for teaching assistants. That would be the year that we would be considering adding maybe one or two teachers into the budget, so that would offset some of those costs that we would be adding into the operational budget. And then in fiscal year '28, moving again one more FTE into the operational, slowing down the, the number of what our budget would be going up in those fiscal years. And then by fiscal year '29, we would be reducing our teachers to zero, we would be moving four FTEs from the revolving account into the operational account, and it's all done according to what our revenue stream would be left in that account. So, any questions on scenario two before I get into scenario three?
Scenario two brings it out a little longer, is that what it is?
It would bring it out a little bit, correct, a little bit longer.
We asked them to do that because of that bubble class coming through.
So scenario three would be what Leo requested, which is ripping off the Band-Aid and what it would look like. So again, if we look at fiscal year '25, which will be next year, we know that our salaries would be about $489,000 between the four FTEs for teachers and the six for FTEs for TAs. And we could absorb that within the revolving account because we would have a half a million dollars, you know, in our revolving account for our fiscal year '25. But in fiscal year '26, once we moved or we paid our expenses for fiscal year '25, we would have about $65,000 left, which is about 2.4 FTEs that we could pay for, which would be TAs in the revolving account. And that would mean that we would be moving, you know, approximately $453,000 from the revolving account into the operational account, so that would be, you know, about a half a million dollars hit in one year. And that doesn't include, you know, any of the union contracts or any other obligations that we have in contracts moving forward.
Band-Aid, yeah.
So, so those are the three scenarios, and we can answer any questions that you have. We do know that, you know, once we go into full-time, free, you know, kindergarten for students, that the following year, it would affect our Chapter 70, and so depending on the number of students that that year that we make that decision, instead of getting a half of a refundable amount from Chapter 70 for students, we would get the full amount for those students. So, you know, we had that, we showed you that last time, that for example, right, if, if you have 171 students, the state would divide that in half, and we would, we currently, you know, get reimbursed for 85 students. So if you take that 85 students times the $2,741, which is what we give for Chapter 70 per student, you know, you would be looking at an additional $235,000, $236,000 in the following year that would offset some of that cost.
Is there any scenario with the possibility of the additional Chapter 70 dollars we're getting this year that could accelerate this plan? I know that that's not set in stone yet.
So the agreement right now is that we, our budget is already set, so any additional funding that comes through, we'll go to the town, and then that's something that the school committee would have to have a conversation with, with the select board.
Yeah, it's that timing issue we talked about.
Yeah. And I know that the drag would be.
There. Final Senate numbers came out today, but they're still not, everything's finalized.
We know how much we're, we'll receive on that, probably would have, the town would receive.
It's higher than the, the original projection.
So it was 30 was the original, and was it 103?
103.
103 per kid, so a lot more. I think it was, it was 103 and 100. It's in my head, but I'm not sure that's what it was.
So it was.
It was at least 100.
It was 30, then there was this, the second budget, which was 130 something, and then it went down to 100, and I think it's 100, 300, 4,000.
100,000, so. Well, thank you for the rip of the Band-Aid off the person.
Do you have a favorite scenario of these three?
You know, just when, you know, Jeff and I sat down, we went over all this, we didn't take in consideration the first time, the 228 kids, because we, we wanted to, you know, fund, take the funding away, you know, and add this sooner than later, but, you know, going through all the scenarios, we do feel that scenario two would be the best scenario, you know, for the community and for the school committee as we're trying to face, you know, the cost. And we don't know what our next, you know, contract will be for Unit A or Unit B, so this, I think this would be probably the best financial situation that I, I think that we could be in, so.
We're entering the last year of Unit A and B, correct? This year?
Unit B, this year, Unit A, all of, yeah, they're one year off now. Yeah, we tried to get it, get to zeros because we covered scenario one, and that's what we will focus on, but when you guys brought that up at that last meeting, it made a lot of sense to look at that again with that big group coming in, and then with the additional staff we'll probably need. I agree with Michael, I think that's, that's the best one to, financially to go, to go with.
Financially.
It delays the free, so to speak, full-day kindergarten one year, but financially with that group coming in, it makes a lot of sense.
Correct.
It's almost like a race to that 232 almost, right? Like the, how can we get the expense down to that 232 so that when we flip the switch, it just gets absorbed?
And, and that's what we're trying, correct, so it's like a timing issue.
You guys have any other questions? What did we need to vote on specifically, adopting one or just?
So I think, you know, adopting what plan you'd like us to do and the tuition of 2750 for FY '25. I think those two, whatever, we want to rebuild that tuition.
If we adopt scenario two, I mean, we're saying that like this is kind of the guidance that we would like to go forward.
Yeah, so if you're.
For planning purposes, but if. For planning purposes, but if something came up, we could obviously ask to have this revisited?
Yes, absolutely.
But once you approve scenario two, then we can go back and say, you know, we have two years of tuition at twenty seven fifty, and then in the third year at fifteen hundred. But then you guys can revisit that.
Yeah, the difference is that twenty seven fifty, two years instead of one.
Right.
Right, so that's what, so if you voted the twenty seven fifty tonight, we have FY twenty five and FY twenty six if you want us to go with scenario two.
Right, okay. Sure, is there any cantrays or anything online? Any public comment before we vote? Yep.
No hands.
Chris Potts, Seven Cross Street, just a basic question. Has the kindergarten enrollment changed from the one fifty one over the last month for this coming school year?
Has anyone moved into town? Like, has anyone moved into town, like, gone up or gone down?
It was, based on the slide, it was an estimate, I think, one fifty one as of April. I forget what the date was. So now it's a month later.
I haven't gotten the June one yet. Once we get the June one, we'll, we adjust if we need to. We get it the first of the month from the schools.
I like how Jess used to count the rooms.
She did. Count number of bedrooms.
Yes. You want?
Do I make a motion?
Two super motions?
Yeah, I think so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the full-day kindergarten tuition at twenty seven fifty for the FY twenty five school year.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
I'd like a second motion to adopt plan number two for the progression towards fully funded full-day K in the public schools of Medfield. For the FY twenty nine school year.
Second.
The last year we charged, correct?
Twenty seven will be in the last year we charge.
I don't have a motion.
The FY twenty, amend to the FY twenty eight. Option two.
I'm here second for option two.
Will second it.
Second.
Will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes unanimously.
I really just wanted to hear the term.
Okay. The next up in the school building, committee update, and then voting on the grade configuration. I'll do those as two separate, or Leo and I can do those as two separate. So the SBC right now is conducting public forums to receive input from the public on, or feedback from the public and to discuss site selection for a future building project. They've held two already, there's two more. One is coming up on May twenty ninth at eleven AM on the second floor of the town hall. And the final one will be on May thirty first at ten thirty at the senior center, open to the public. We really want people to come and learn about what the SBC has been working on, where we're at right now, and give their feedback on site selection. It's going to be the big, the big topic for that, for that piece. We've also included in our packet a letter to the community that was written to help raise awareness around cost and, you know, trying to make sure that cost is at the forefront of the conversation so that hopefully when we do get to a point that we can vote on a new school that does not come as a surprise to the residents of Medfield. The SBC meetings are held every Wednesday, or sorry, not every Wednesday, the first Wednesday of every month at seven PM, traditionally in the public safety buildings. Our next meeting is on June fifth, open to the public, all are welcome. They, Medfield SBC is also on Facebook. If you wanted to get updates, they've been updating there. SBC has also asked for the school committee to weigh in on grade configuration. So this was a big topic last time during the last go-around in that there was a discussion on changing the grade configuration to three, four, five from four, five. We talked about this as well as a school committee in the fall, although we did not do a formal vote on it, on how cost will be at the forefront of this and switching to three, four, five, while it may be educationally beneficial, will cost still a lot of money to be adding another grade to a building. Leo, do you have anything to add on any of the grade configuration stuff?
Nope. Pretty much, that was the reason why we, it's a consideration that was taken by the committee that was in place in the last, during the last project planning time. And it was decided to reduce the, by grade levels because we were in the middle of the pandemic, the future was uncertain, and so cost was very much the consideration. So some of the main reasons for having the third grade were flexibility in our buildings, the possible option of even closing a building if our population continued to drop, which we're seeing a steady population, so. Those were some of the scenarios that we put out there in the past. And then obviously the benefit of a continuous campus of grade levels on one side. So however, you know, as we predicted, the cost of the project has gone up significantly because of the failed vote. And as a result, because I think finance had a lot to do with it last time, to Michelle's point, like, we can predict as the SBC does feel, I don't want to speak for them directly, but I think that some of the consensus was that if we added an additional grade to the planning, it would drive the cost up that much higher, that would hinder the possibility of an approval.
So previously, prior as well to the SBC, or sorry, the school committee voting in one direction, the plan was for a three, four, five school to be built on Wheelock, right? Memorial would then become an early childhood center, pre-K and K. Wheelock was going to become one, two, and then the new building would have been three, four, five. Right? So that's what, that's what they had been evaluating at that time. So the ask right now is basically?
Two or three different grades.
Right.
We're not actually naming the grade levels. We're just saying, two grades, two grades or three grades.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions on grade configuration, keeping it as is or changing it?
No, I mean, I understand the cost, right? So I feel like we're sort of stuck based on the fact that now we're going to pay more for less. Anyway.
That's the Medfield way.
Yep, I know.
That's the Medfield way.
So, which is disappointing for a lot of reasons.
I've heard of in the town that hasn't worked that way.
I know. So I think for those reasons, like, are we voting on two grades for a school or making that recommendation is what we need to do?
Correct.
Yep, okay.
Building, we're talking about building a two-grade.
Yes, building a two-grade school versus a three-grade school, yes.
And the SOI is written for a four, five.
Correct.
The current asked MSBA is for a four, five.
Right, so obviously.
But there is a.
Well, no, because obviously Wheelock and Memorial are nicer than Dale, so.
Well, the idea is that there is still the possibility that the committee could say, we're not going to wait for that MSBA.
Yes, exactly, so that we could do something different, yes, I understand that.
But the SOI is a four, five.
Yep. So we've seen.
It's Tim as well. Good show, I've been on, I just had trouble.
Hi, Tim.
With the captain's speed driving today. You know, if this is going to vote, I'd rather weigh in. I support the conversation that's been described so far as well.
How far are you?
I'm close, getting in the Foxborough.
All right, good to know.
We need, we need you here for the, you know, for the policies.
Oh, please.
It's only about, it's only about forty five, only about forty five years for you to read, buddy.
All right.
I just wanted you to know, though, I was trying to speak earlier and I forgot about the captain's speed thing, and now my car is working properly, so.
Good. Thank you, glad to hear it. Do you have anything else you want to add? Given that you and Leo were obviously very involved in the last discussion of grade configuration as school committee members, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I think, I agree, I think the, what we have is working, you know, it's not, it's not overriding, hey, I mean, it's going to be moved that much better if we went to a three-grade. And I think even introducing that, there's a cost issue, there's a change in what we have in culture. And you just have to, that amount of change may make it that much more difficult to get anything approved. And I think that's high level with everyone I've heard from everyone else, so I support that.
I will say cost is a very big issue, so.
Yes.
You know, the numbers we're seeing, the predictions, the forecasts, it's everything that we were told would happen if it didn't pass last time and even then.
Yep. Is there anybody else online, like, raising their hand or comments or questions?
I don't think I do, no, I don't see any hands.
Any comments? Someone like to make a motion?
Motion to endorse the two-grade configuration to pass on to the SBC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
And tonight, aye. The other ones I've been saying from bonus ones.
Okay. And Michelle Kirk, the aye, so all aye. Okay. All right, motion passes. Okay, let's see, next up is?
Just wondering since you voted.
Oh, we should roll call, okay, sorry. Leo, can you do it one more time? You have to do a roll call.
Yes, sorry. Motion to endorse the two-grade configuration to the SBC from the school committee.
Second, the motion.
All right, Michelle Kirk, the aye.
Leo Brim, aye.
Will Horn, aye.
Diana Frashella, aye.
Tim, one more?
Tim, aye, aye.
Thank you.
Tim, aye, aye.
Are we good?
Good, he's so good. I keep sitting right here.
Okay. Do you have anything else to add from or about the SBC?
I dropped in briefly. I had my daughter with me, and she refused to come into Dale.
She's like, spend all day here.
That's right. She did not want to go in and give her two cents on the building. So, but it did look like, I think I saw Steve there, and he said there was about a dozen of some people who were not connected to the committees. So that somewhat would turn out. We have a couple more, a couple more coming up in the next week or so. So please come check it out, very, that's the budget part. Now, it's, it's good to get the feedback, we really do want to hear the feedback. So for those who are listening, please do, please do come to one of the information sessions or even one of our meetings at the safety center on the first Wednesday of the month.
Yep. All right, next up, we have community engagement and communication. I attended the Memorial PTO final meeting. It was really exciting to see the progress that they've made with the playground. And my kindergartner talks about it all the time, but it was just, yeah, it was just good to hear, good to hear them, what they've done this year, what they've been able to accomplish. So all positive stuff coming from Memorial.
I attended CPAC last night. It's one of their big transitional meetings, where they elected new board members. But they really have done a lot of work this year to, for gaining exposure, and they were, it was their year in review. So they've done letters and fundraisers and quite a bit of work. Very impressive by this group. And I believe the co-presidents were on here, so hopefully they're hearing me talking about that because I was very impressed with their dedication. So please join CPAC too, as part of that community. I know Mary Brule's a big supporter, obviously, in helping them grow that organization. And then they have an award that they give out called the Jim James Conclusion Award. And they had twenty nominees.
That's great, that is great.
So, yeah, and then multiple, multiple people nominated by, multiple people got nominated by different people. So that was very, that was great to see, that many people. Lots of people in our community that are reaching out and connecting with our learners and it's being recognized. So that's a, just to have that number of people nominated, I think, for an award that is not as well-known as some of our others, I think it was pretty amazing.
And they'll be presenting. They'll be presenting here on June sixth, right?
Yes. I don't want to reveal.
Okay, yep, no, no, no. It can wait.
Not my place. And if they want to add anything, obviously they're on the Zoom or somebody will be on the Zoom.
Well, I just, too, shout out on May, May twenty eighth, they have co-sponsored with the Medfield Outreach a self-care for summer thing. Melissa wanted that to get, they wanted that to get shouted out as well. And they're looking for a, there's a, there's still need to, there's a grade board, but there's still a preschool rep and a communications chair. Anyone would like to help get involved, we should back for that. No, I'd like to talk to Melissa.
I was quite, I think of the other co-president. It might have been a co-president.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't remember which, it was a long conversation.
And for the, the middle school PTO, they're still looking for people to decorate the eighth-grade field fence for eighth, or sorry, the baseball fence for eighth-grade graduation. So looking for opportunities to get involved, we mentioned earlier. Please help them do that, because otherwise, one or two people will be decorating the whole baseball field for all of eighth-grade graduation. So if you have an eighth grader, even if you don't, please reach out and try to help.
Did they get enough people for the barbecue?
I think so. That was what I was told to ask for.
Okay, so that, I was just wondering, because I've seen those sign-ups as well.
The barbecue they were, they're working hard at, but that was the one that I got to shout out, was for eighth-grade graduations, decorate the fence.
Yep.
Put the date on that.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, I live here.
Almost at the end of this year, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. That's mid-June.
Yeah. Anything else on communication or community engagement? Okay. School start time.
Yep, so we had our committee meeting, we've had, I think we've had two meetings since our last meeting. So we did a public hearing where people could come. We had about five or six community members come. Everyone who did stand up to speak after we shared sort of a couple slides what came to show their support of moving, potentially considering moving start times for our high school and middle school to be later, including one student from the middle school who came to show, to show his support of moving it as well. So then we had our last committee meeting last week. So we were supposed to have one more, but we really came to the conclusion that we've done all the fact-finding, we had the survey information, we did the public hearing, we've asked for feedback, that we are ready to present scenarios to Dr. Marston, who will then review them and bring them to the school committee. So the ask was to provide at least two different options. So we did come up with two different scenarios that we thought could work to be presented using the logic that, that was shared, that we need at least thirty-five minutes between the start times of the two schools to allow for the buses. And then we even built in a little bit extra time, knowing that like traffic patterns may change if we do do some moving around of school start times. And then obviously, once it gets brought to you and then to this committee, then they're still, we'll be talking to the union to make sure it works for the teachers. But we didn't feel like it was necessary to have another meeting because we were able to come to a consensus on what we wanted to present.
So the plan right now then is they're going to make recommendations to you?
Right.
Yes.
And then present at our June sixth meeting?
So they'll present at the June sixth meeting. And one of the things we have to talk about, too, is some of the recommendations. They have the, some of the times and different scenarios to look at. We have to think about how the school committee will or will not approve that based on negotiations. So we'd have to do impact bargaining on that. So if there's two times or one time that you folks vote on, and we can't impact bargain that, we have to adjust five or ten minutes or whatever. So I, I want to just talk to you a little bit about how that, what that looks like in terms of your vote, whether the times are actually in there or the concept is there based on, now let's look at the, the times through impact bargaining, which I think might be the better way to go with that because. Which I think might be the better way to go with that, because we have to have those conversations with the teachers. So, we can talk about that after, but I think it might be the way to go.
Okay.
Can we build in that possibility in the last negotiation about that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's always pending, you know, negotiations, I think, so.
Then it's not gonna be a surprise.
No, I mean, the, in your representations on the committees, they were part of it.
Yes, and, yes, Erin's on the committee, and she's, right, I, right, it's the time they have to spend at the school, is written into the contract, not the actual time.
Right. It's a seven-hour, fifteen-minute workday.
Yes, but, yeah, she has been there, and there's other teachers there who have been part of the committee consistently.
Tim, do you have any questions or anything you wanna add?
The only question, I think, Dr. Marston, I think, in my assumption, is, I, I know, I think I understand what you're saying, like, not the exact number. But does the time between them making a recommendation to you in June sixth, do you have time to at least get general feedback from your, you know, teachers and staff? Like, is, is June sixth okay?
I mean, I think, I think, I think June sixth is okay for the concept, I don't think June sixth is okay to nail down a time. I think people are crazy busy and.
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah, but you need to at least get general, general vibes.
Yeah.
It would be, if you're getting, you know, I know the initial survey from staff is very helpful, but if they, general vibes were problematic, you would wanna, you know, we wanna have, you know, that, at that point, maybe we.
Right.
I don't, I guess we address that option, so, so with high level, you, you think that you have time to at least get general vibes between now and then?
For sure, yeah.
Okay.
And by general vibes, it's gonna be, you know, conversations, it's not gonna be a formal survey or anything like that, it's gonna be a conversation with the union executive board, that kinda stuff. That's what I'm talking about with general vibes, my definition.
Yeah, and you also have, if, if it's teach on that committee as well, so.
Right, oh, for sure.
So I just wanted, it's, I wanna make sure.
Yeah, sure.
Not everybody's gonna be happy with a change.
No, it's not.
Thank you guys for all your work on the school start time committee. Appreciate all of the work you've done over the past couple of months to get us to this point. And to all the committee members, not just, not just you two, all the committee members.
Yes, it's, it's been quite a few people weighing in, so it's been good.
Um, okay, so, next up, we're up to policies. Tim?
Alright, Tim, policies.
How close are you?
Here we go.
He's sitting in the parking lot.
I know, he told me.
Policies.
Um, so, policy manual, section E, um, this is the second reading and a potential vote on our support services. I'm sure you all have spent a lot of time, um, reading this, so, and wondering if you have any questions, or wanna point us to any typos or mistakes, which there probably will be.
So, I found that EBAB, um, under one A.
Just be tested, isn't it?
Don't write them down, I just read what they are, but it should say, the Medfield Public Schools and not just Medfield.
Why did everybody drop off on the Zoom or what?
I don't know, riveting, this is how you get yourself to go to sleep.
Okay, on one.
Um, and then I had an EEAEA. If we're eliminating number three, I just wanted to note that I think they all need to be renumbered. And I feel like I'm singing like Old MacDonald, right? And then EFC, um, okay, sorry, sorry.
What was number two?
EEAEA.
Oh, you're getting it, okay.
Right, renumber if they did number three, that makes sense.
Yes, and then EFC. There was awkward wording in one of the, like, a word was left that made it. But the wording on one of the things, there was a word left that shouldn't have been left there, I think. Start printing these out and bring them with me. Yeah, so it says, it just said, the school committee will approve this policy statement, or the school committee will, the school committee approves.
An extra S there, right?
It just depends, are you keeping well, are you adding S, it's just the sentence isn't correct, that's all. Oh, yeah.
Because you don't need that S, I think.
Right.
Yeah, just pick up the S.
That's what I had for policy notes for section E.
I had one comment as well for section E, was it typo or same thing, it was ECAC, the vandalism section? We're just missing a word in the third paragraph, it should read, is further authorized to delegate as they see fit, versus they fit, it's just the word was removed.
Right.
Got it?
Yeah.
Any others?
Nope.
Public comments?
Right, add.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy E, support services, as amended. I'm sorry. Section B, policy manual, section B, support services.
Leo, do you wanna say inform?
In, inform, why I said it?
He's here.
Inform.
Second.
Before you check it out.
Tim, I joined at the twenty-third. Hello. Second?
Second, second.
Oh, we got the second.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Welcome, Tim.
Welcome, Tim.
Alright, thanks.
Uh, you are joining us for policy manual, section F.
The short one, you want the short one?
You know, you're doing a great job, Eric.
I gotta download it, hold on. Uh, anybody have any comments? Or suggestions on section F, facilities management?
I did not have anything.
I did not have any.
Come on, nothing? Any public comment on policy manual, section F, facilities management? I'd like to make a motion to approve policy manual, section F, facilities management, inform.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, next is policy manual, section G, personnel. One is, uh, is lengthy, so, uh, any comments or concerns?
I had one thing, but let me find it now, it was under GCJ. The GCJ, it says, the committee may continue in the employ of the school system in another position for which they are, is legally qualified, so it should be, they are legally qualified.
Qualified. What paragraphs are it?
It was the second one.
No, they are, um, third paragraph, last line, yeah. So, it's just on top of it. Alright, any others? Any public comment on policy manual, section G, personnel? Check with Zoom, because you never know, so maybe it's really, it's right about there. Only one left on Zoom. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve policy manual, section G, personnel, inform.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes.
Next, policy manual, section H, negotiations, very important one. Anybody have any comments or concerns, section H?
No.
Any public, public comment? I've got something coming, Casey on Zoom.
Okay.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion to approve policy manual, section H, negotiations, inform.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Almost there, folks. Policy manual, section K.
So the only thing I had for K is under KI in the first sentence, um, it says, the school committee encourages parent guardians, school committee is not capitalized there, and everywhere else it was, so I just wanted us to be consistent.
Any others?
I did not have anything else, nope.
Our student rep has, um, no comments?
No.
Checking.
Community.
School committee. Any public comment on policy manual, section K?
So on, um, section K, there's some problematic, um, deletions, specifically KHA. There's some, there's quite a bit of language in KHA, um, and, sorry, I lost the page. That actually gives more leeway to the district to allow for commercial fundraising in the schools. And it also, um, some of the changes in the policy, uh, remove the authority of school committee to actually prohibit that kinda commercial sales in the school. There's also another policy, sorry. There was a joint policy that's not included in this, it was G, KJ, KGAR, and then it was also joined with JJEAR. So, should, and that's missing, the fundraising one is missing from this K section, so should that be included? As part of that K section?
So, I wanna, just, yeah, I can get there, which is K?
KGAR, JJ, KGAR.
Is missing completely.
Is missing completely.
Yes, exactly.
Missing or removed?
Yeah.
None of those removed, it should have been blacked or reded out like everything else.
Right, so we'd be able, I don't think it's in there at all.
Right, I don't see it.
And then specifically in KHA, the, the complete deletion of that policy in the, in the second section, says, no general or class distribution of commercial or fundraising literature may take place without school committee permission. Um, school committee should have authority over being able to prohibit commercial fundraising literature. And the same with the, the direct solicitation of students.
In number two of KHA, we could strike information packets, because we worded number two, include that, because right now it's being very specific to information packets. In KHA, no solicitations may be made to students on behalf of commercial, and just strike, uh, or through the stu, oh, I guess it does, no, it's a or through, so I, I think it's covered in number two. KHA two? No solicitation may be made to students or through the student information packets on behalf of commercial, full profit businesses unless sponsored by the school department, or organizations, or require express, express approval of the superintendent.
You're saying school committee.
Yeah, I'm saying school committee.
She's saying that the language used to say the school committee approved it, I think now that has been what's.
Gotcha.
Right, to say, I think, the point, yeah.
Well, we can bring that up for discussion, is that it?
Yeah, that's it, and I just wanted, just, just in terms of rationale, I mean, you have, there have been instances, instances in the past with fundraising activities, commercial fundraising activities, where the activities themselves have gone against school policy in a number of instances. And, and so the removal of, of some of this language will then actually allow some of these things to continue without being checked. And it's concerning, because it's put the kids, put the students themselves in, in positions that go against our school policy.
So, well, we'll just discuss this particular piece, so I think the, the question is, whether or not to keep it at the superintendent level or bring it to our level, and how many of these do we get, right?
That's what I wanna know, is like, what is the volume?
I mean, besides from the shaving cream, through the guidance department, right?
I mean, it would be everything, it'd be everything.
Oh, yeah, guidance department gets packets with.
This would be every, every fundraiser, so, it's fine with me, but they'd have to come up here and do that.
What I was gonna say without interrupting it though, I'm just looking at the old language, it's, it's, we'll place limits on commercial activities. I mean, I, what I'm just wondering is, I don't know that we are, like, if we saw things that were concerning to us, or somebody from the community raised it. You know, I think we would, we would raise it, like, you know, I think that, what I would expect is I would have a conversation with Dr. Mar, you know, or Dr. Marston, I, I'm just wondering, is.
We could, we could make it language with that, because at this point, I mean, I feel like it's probably building-based, uh, that goes to, that goes to your team, alright? So it's a site-based concern that goes in superintendent's team, and we could ask for anything that is district-wide, come to school committee.
What is an example right now, just so I make sure I'm understanding this correctly?
Mattress sale, I'm sure is what this is about, yeah, I'm assuming.
That's what I was assuming too, it's the mattress sale.
What's a mattress sale?
That's how MMA is, it was raising funds.
Right, but I feel like that's. Would that be?
Do the funds go into our revolving account, or do they go into MMA's account?
Would this be like the Harlem Globetrotters or whatever?
Sure, sure, everything.
Anything that is outside entity, raising funds on behalf.
But.
Yeah.
But we're raising them to support the schools.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Sometimes, yes.
So anything like, for instance, I know Molly talks about some of the things that they sell for, like, all of those, all of those things that the kids do currently do now.
Okay.
So it would be everything, sports teams, theater fundraisers, group fundraisers, club fundraisers, all that, yeah.
What is it, we want the, let's just say, school committee in here, not just superintendent?
I think there's, there's instances where it should come to school committee, and it shouldn't be just a superintendent decision, especially when it goes against multiple other policies that are in it.
This was looked at with, um, right, with MAS C, and this is in line with MAS C's policies and other districts' policies.
I think the concept was just that, right, as a building-based item, uh, you know, Jeff's and his team have, you know, they've managed this, this is about, we did, I mean, that's why I'm asking how many, that's good.
Well, that's what I was trying to understand from the volume question, like, what, what are we talking about?
Right, and I've only heard of one concern, and that was the mattress sale.
So, exactly, what I was just wondering, you know, like, again, I, I think, it may be something we, we defer just to get advice, like, I look at the last sentence from section five, is it is written? Unusual request is made, superintendent basically. Unusual or questionable request is made, superintendent may seek the opinion of the school committee. Now, maybe that's a bilateral. Or in the event, in the event that there is an unusual
It is.
Request or an event, the school committee or the superintendent may weigh in on it. Like, that, that's what I'm saying, my, that's my only thought is that if there's something that's problematic.
We both have class trips.
Saying we don't have the.
That's, that's money that's going, not from us, but being solicited to our students, right, the class trips?
That's trouble.
Right. So, you know, those are companies that are working with our staff.
Right.
So, um, and we do vote on those. So I would say that in the current practice, I think everything's fine. If we want language to match our practice, I don't know. Could add.
I'd like to stay in line with what MASC is recommending, given that this is, you know, who we've been utilizing and, and in line with what other school districts are doing, right? Like, I actually, I don't want to be in a space where we're just one-offing a bunch of different things just because, like, if this is the guidance coming from.
I would agree, if this is aligned with what most school districts are doing, and that was the suggestion.
Like, if something comes up that we don't like, we can, if all this becomes a subject matter, we can make, we make the policy.
I worry that if we change, then we have to approve everything that you're getting into not a good like, it would just be too many and impossible.
Kind of, it kind of revolves, yes. We hired Jeff to be the CEO of our organization.
Oh, yes, I agree, I agree.
You know. Chris, any other examples other than the mattress sale?
No, but I also was curious about what you decided on the missing policy, the KGA R.
I, I think, what I would say, Leo, you and I have talked about some of this. The manual is, you know, there's, there's a lot there. If there's something missing, if there's something that we're either approving in form or we can hold it out.
We can approve this the way it is.
Round, where you can hold out one or two policies to say.
So you're saying we can approve everything, pull out KHA for further evaluation?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't looked at the KHA R, like, just treading out. Yeah, for that, that, that's what I'm saying, that, I'm not, you know, I wouldn't be shocked if there is still something that may on a policy manual that has been in place for many, many years or a recommendation, you know, that we worked in collaboration with MASC. But, you know, so this, there's still another set, like, J, we just received this week.
Well, so, it looks like, it looks like it was eliminated off the gas because there's no KGA either.
Yeah, it's not in the, in the material.
I think it might be replaced in section J.
Okay.
But I, but I don't.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it in any of these other schools either, any sort of KG.
Yeah, I'm not.
KJ A, right?
KGA R, I'm not seeing anything.
KGA.
No, there's, there's KJ A R right now in our current manual slash JJER in our, in our current manual. But I think maybe it turned into JJ.
It may have, there were a couple things that were moved. Well, we can inquire about KGA and KGA R, but as current, we can move. The question currently by the public comment is that on, on the authority of the school committee or whatnot, and currently, I'm, I don't see a major issue with it currently, so.
I, I, I don't either, like, I, I don't.
But, but you and I have stared at it, so I don't know what the rest of it is.
I am, based on having this conversation, I am comfortable with how it's written.
Sam?
These are, and please note that these are, I won't call them fluid, but they're changeable.
They're living documents.
At any time, yes. When Conchessa goes off the rails and starts, you know, listening. Just joking.
So, so that, I mean, that's kind of, like, I think in the scenario that there's a fundraising event that is elevated or, you know, that is problematic, we would put it on an agenda.
Yeah.
That would be.
Or if it's, quote, unusual in nature.
You know, I, I think we have enough controls in place when I, we don't have a superintendent.
Like, the tattoo fundraiser probably would.
Hey, we've talked about it, we think we should do X. That's just, that, that's how I think about it.
Yeah, so, can we just vote on this?
Yes. Are you gonna make a motion?
Sure. I don't know about the missing thing, but.
The missing thing, can we have brought up, we'll, we'll clarify where that went.
Okay, we can bring that up later, I'm fine with Dr. Marsen doing the thing. So a motion that we vote on section K as, what did you say?
Policy manual, section K, school community in form.
In form, yeah, that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Next. Policy manual, section L, education agency relations. So, any comments, concerns in section L?
I didn't have any, no.
We just add to the, on the old business of KGA and KGA R, and the next is. On a quick Google search, I couldn't find it. Plus, our old stuff is indexed.
Right.
Images, yeah. Any comments?
So I'm not hearing, yeah, no, I'm not hearing any questions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
And just, is there any public comment on?
Oh, yeah, public comments, all right.
Anyone online?
We've successfully lost everybody on this one.
Okay, they've gone to bed.
Callan was hanging on, I think.
But that's what the policy does, yeah.
Computer went to sleep. Okay. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve policy manual, section L, education agency relations in form.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
They get out off the hook yet, we have first reading, I believe, or informational.
We don't have I?
Oh, sorry, so we have, uh,
I thought.
We have I as an informational.
Oh, I had, okay.
So, if you have any comments, I, you're welcome to share them right now, you can share them.
Well, I do have.
We're not gonna vote on it yet, but sure.
Yes, but I do, just, um, on, um.
Go ahead, spit them out.
Yes, IHAM dash R, the health education exemption procedure. In the third paragraph, it just needs to say, it says, like, the principal will confer, et cetera, et cetera, length of time the student will be, that should be exempt, not, like, it's except, the, the word's just the wrong word. And then in the last paragraph, there's just also typos with the number of school days. I'd also, there's other areas in I that we say how long, like, uh, that it will take for a principal to respond to a request. And in this one, we didn't, we said a reasonable amount. So I guess one of my comments, just thinking about I, was that if we're gonna be consistent, if we say two weeks or 10 days, we should do it consistently when a parent has, like, an exemption request.
I would just say, some of the timeframes are guided by law that we have to do, like, so some of them are, and some of them aren't, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so at this point, too, I think it's, in theory, you put it in as informational.
Yep.
Right, it's, it's good to raise it, because there's some of those typos we can, we can.
We can fix, yeah, exactly.
Before first reading. Intentional informational before this whole thing.
Yes, exactly.
Clarification, because we're always welcome.
Any public comment on policy manual, section I, instructional?
We're not voting.
No, because we're not voting.
We don't need any.
Or we don't need it.
Yeah. Sorry for the confusion, I clearly did not read the informational piece.
If it's informational and there's, else we see something that's like, wait, let us know.
Okay, so we're good with policy right now, then?
It would be so.
All right, and informational items, the accept education collab FY23 annual report is included in our meeting packet. Future agenda items, retirees, end of the year organization updates, CPAC Jim James Award, strategic plan update, school start time committee presentations, KGA and KGA R that Leo just pointed out. Anybody have anything that they want to share before we announce our next meetings? On anything?
No.
Great, our next meeting will be June 6th, and our final meeting will be a hybrid meeting workshop in the morning of June, I'm gonna write it down, the 20th?
20th.
20th. Okay, so that, if needed, we'll use as a, um, meeting if we need to vote on the school start times or any additional policy stuff, and then we'll move to workshop to discuss the things that we talked about already. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, everybody.